The school committee. Um, and first thing I'll note is that Leah, our chairperson, will not be in attendance tonight, so I'll be leading the meeting in her absence. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all mute. And I will recite. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next. Item of business is citizens' comments, and I have not been made aware of anyone wishing to make a public comment, so we will move on to item three on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And I will ask Joe if he could read the motion.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, move to approve the consent agenda of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, contain the draft meeting minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and the warrants of March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Joe. I'll second that. So any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that's unanimous. Did I miss anybody who came in after that? I don't think so. All right. Moving on. Uh, the next item of business is the school committee chairperson update, really the only update I've already given, which is Leah sends her regrets that she could not be here, but she had a conflict. And I'll just say that I do believe, Mike, you can correct me or Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. I do believe this is Leah's first absence, which is remarkable. Truly. Um. And we'll all strive to be more like Leah. All right. So the next thing is our student representative report. We are just flying through things, and I do see that we've got one of our student representatives here. Um, so I'll hand it off to Hansi.
Hi, everyone. Um, Ava says sorry that she can't join. Her Wi-Fi is being really spotty today, but she wishes she could be here. Um, so for today's report, this week, students have been filling out surveys in all their classes. Um, their focus on the school-wide focus and the department-specific goals around student engagement. These surveys are being conducted in place of the Panorama Survey, seeing how many students have expressed the desire to give their own feedback about their experiences in various departments. The Nishoba Choirs had an eventful concert last night. All of our choirs performed outstanding repertoire, ranging from spirituals, folksy songs, pop, and some southern Indian classical Carnatic music. We would like to congratulate Nishoba Senior Jack London, who is the Nishoba recipient of the Worcester County Superintendent's Association Scholar Award for twenty twenty four. And Nishoba has seen quite a bit of foreign exchange fun happening recently. A handful of our French students had the opportunity to travel to Quebec recently, and they report having a wonderful time. We were also super happy to have hosted our German exchange friends, and we wish them well as they depart tonight. Our sophomores recently took the ELI MCAS on Tuesday and today as well, and we'd like to congratulate our cadets for running a very successful CPR benefit marathon last weekend. To learn more, you can check out their feature in the Worcester Telegram. Students can make changes to their course scheduling for next year until April first. This is also when override requests are due. The junior class of twenty twenty five is currently doing a raffle fundraiser. Each ticket's twenty dollars, and participants will have the opportunity to win either a Yeti Cooler, a solo bonfire stove, two Stanley tumblers, and two stadium heat cushions. Finally, Ms. Rich will be sending out a Google Drive folder for photos from spring sports. We're requesting that parents send pictures to go in the yearbook, and we want to make sure to have spring sport athletes sent in as soon as possible, since we only have one more week until the twenty twenty four yearbook has to be submitted for production. That's it for tonight.
Awesome. Thank you for that report. Um, do any school committee members have questions or comments for our student representative? Uh, Sharon, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment. Um, Hansi sold herself short a little bit there because she led the Indian music last night, and it was phenomenal. It was just such a great experience. Um, and I also wanted to tag on to that, that I had the pleasure of being at the play a couple of weekends ago, the band concert last week, and the chorus concert last night, and they were all phenomenal, just phenomenal. So kudos to all those kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Park, for your compliment as well.
Lots of good things happening, a really active arts and music department that we should all be really proud of. Kids put a lot of work into it. I was at the play also. It was hilarious and so well done. And um, and my daughter was on that Quebec trip, and I was so grateful that she had that experience. It was wonderful. So, thank you, Hansi.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next week, and you are welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to get on with whatever else you have to do tonight. I'm sure you're busy.
Sure, sounds good. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Yep. Bye.
Bye.
All right, let me get back to my agenda here. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. And so for that, I am going to hand it off to Superintendent Downing.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you for that recognition, and thank you to the committee, uh, for everyone being here tonight. Um, I have to say, Madam Vice Chair, we've been so ensconced in budget over the last series of meetings. We're making up for it tonight with lots of information from our teacher and learning office and Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend. So it's at this time that I am just going to turn it directly over to Ms. Friend. However, Ms. Friend, I think Hansi, store your thunder on some of our, some of our.
As well she should.
As well she should.
That's what we hope for with our students. You did a good job.
Uh, without further ado, Assistant Superintendent Friend, please take it away.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Superintendent Downing. Tonight's updates are all focused on, uh, travel updates and the trips and competitions, uh, that our students have recently engaged in. Five updates, to be exact, all good. Thank you to the school committee for approving our travel opportunities for our students, and thank you to our chaperones and our trip coordinators and our parents and our teachers, because these trips would not be a reality without, um, your support and their support. We could not offer these opportunities, which are pretty unique for our students, um, without your support. So thank you. First update is about our high school concert band and festival choir and traveling to Orlando in February. They presented two concerts in downtown Disney and benefited from clinic sessions with a Disney musician. So many skills learned, I've heard, what it's like to be a professional musician and record a soundtrack to film. They also had a lot of fun, uh, including enjoying a bit of time at Disney World as well, of course. So a good trip for our music, uh, department at the high school. The second update is an update, uh, that Hansi referenced about our German gap exchange program. Uh, in early February, seven students and two teachers from Nishoba traveled to Germany for two weeks. They lived with host families, attended classes, visited Nuremberg and Garmisch, and from all of the reports that we've heard from them, they had a great time. There are photos included in the update. Not included in the writing of this update, and Hansi mentioned it, is the second part of the gap exchange, and that's the visit from our German guests to Nishoba, which has occurred over the past two weeks, and, and, and our friends left today. In like fashion of experience, our German guest students live with our Nishoba host families, they attended classes, visited famous sites. They walked down the Freedom Trail. They visited Faneuil Hall and Old Sturbridge Village. Superintendent Downing and I had the pleasure of meeting our German guests at a meet and greet at the high school last Wednesday, and it was great to meet them and hear from them. The third update, uh, is about our Quebec trip. Students just returned from a great and cold and snowy, we're glad they're home safely, uh, on Saturday trip to Quebec. It was a full itinerary with lots of sightseeing, enjoying the culture, a ferry ride, and, and lots of eating, and photos are included in the update as well. Again, thank you to the chaperones, um, for making these trips happen. The final two updates are relative to competitions that our students experienced. DECA, first up, our Nishoba DECA team was well represented, uh, as we knew it would be at the Mass DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston in early March. We had a hundred and four students compete against thirty eight hundred DECA members across the state. We are excited to share that Nishoba finished with twenty-two state champions, finishing in the top five in their categories, and another thirteen earning recognition by finishing in the top ten in the state. Shout out to Mr. A and Ms. Norton for their leadership here. Along with our students, our twenty-two state champions will now compete globally at the DECA International Conference in Anaheim in late April. There is a slideshow attached to the update for more information about the Boston competition and photos, too. And then finally, uh, robotics trip update. Robotics had a great turnout at the New England District Hartford event. They finished second seed out of thirty-four teams in twelve qualifying matches, which is pretty impressive. A great competition. Um, we encourage you to check out the video that's linked in the update. I watched it twice, first to understand what I was watching. The second time to really appreciate the efforts of the, of the robot and the team and the communication, which was pretty impressive. The next step is the first world championship in Houston on April sixteenth. With no luck needed, we wish them the best of luck. And then of a final note of the last two, the committee will find updated travel approval forms in the meeting materials for both Anaheim and Houston trips respect, respectively. Preliminary approval had been granted for DECA in early October, and for robotics in November, we'd been waiting on our team and student performance for next steps and to solidify planning. Uh, this is reflected in the completed travel forms provided. I believe Ms. Masterson sent those over today. Those are it for the five updates. A lot going on there, a lot of movement and activity for our students at the high school, which is great.
Ms. Ms. Friend, I think you can, um, we can actually, those are the announcements. We'll pause before we move on to the strategic work if there's any questions from the committee.
Um, the only thing I wanted to say is I didn't see those posted in the media materials, so I think we'll just follow up with you after the meeting to make sure those end up there. Um, the forms. Exactly what you were gonna say.
Yes.
Okay.
Amy, what are you referring to? The, um, travel request forms?
Yes.
Yeah, they're in there. You probably haven't looked at them since I uploaded them.
I'm on the website right now, and I don't see them, so we can, we can touch base.
Have you had your browser open for a while that you need to refresh it, maybe?
Okay, I'll try doing that. I have, actually. Uh, anything else before we move on with the rest of the update? I'm not seeing any hands, so go back to you, Superintendent Downing.
All right, Ms. Friend, let's move on.
That's in the baton. All right. Um, first strategic update is just, um, a recap and an update about how our March fifteenth Professional Development Day went. We had a great day, uh, professional learning on March fifteenth. We always appreciate the opportunity to come together as a community. We don't often get to do that. It's just awesome to be together. We started the day with our panelists sharing their perspectives on the practical application of our Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate competencies. It was great to hear from them. It was also really great to see and hear from our Nishoba graduate, Ailen Oberlees, who got a rounding, uh, uh, just a, a rousing round of applause, um, when faculty and staff saw him. It was great to hear from him. Gems of wisdom from, uh, Ailen, for sure. The day offered a variety of options for our Nishoba educators in support of our str- strategic plan. We had thirty-nine faculty and staff present and facilitate a session, which is ten more from last year, which is fantastic. We had two current Nishoba students presenting, I believe I had mentioned that to the committee earlier. Our EMT cadets provided hands-on CPR training in the upper gym, and twenty-three student ambassadors helped throughout the day with all things big and small. It was great, um, to have them with us as well. Also, eight colleagues from neighboring districts volunteered their time to help us learn and run a session. So it was great. The feedback from the day was positive. We've provided, um, I provided for you um, the respondent ratings, the overall respondent ratings in the update, and some of the open field comments. Um, a particular note for us, which we hope to see in large part were comments relative the articulation of the connections to our strategic work, which we are engaging in. So overall, it was a positive day, and we appreciate everyone coming together and learning together. And we also appreciate the school committee's support, and I know a couple of our school committee members, we were honored to have them join us, uh, on that day as well. So good day, and we're looking forward to next year. Which will look different, but we're looking forward to next year.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions on this portion? Okay, Shandor.
Uh, I just wanted to say I was, uh, fortunate to be able to, uh, attend and spend the day, uh, at the conference, and it was excellent. It was great, just, um, clearly, the rock star of that opening panel was the alum, uh, Ailen there. Uh, it was, uh, I was sitting next to some, uh, a teacher who pulled out her cellphone and found an old photo of a much younger version, uh, and it was like, uh, I know him. Uh, but I think what was awesome was that he challenged the audience at the start of the day uh, to embrace creativity and create those opportunities, and he shared some examples of some powerful moments of his learning at Nishoba. Uh, and I think he was an amazing example of a graduate who exemplifies that portrait of a graduate we talk about. Um, and being a tech guy, I also was happy to hear, uh, a lot of talk about artificial intelligence and not just, oh, my God, it's going to help people cheat and take our jobs away, but, uh, a much more constructive, positive thing in recognizing that, uh, humans still are going to have an important role in the future, and we need to prepare them for that. So I was just so impressed with the enthusiasm and interest in learning I saw from everyone who was attending, and I love the format of giving all the attendees a lot of choice uh, and agency over what they learn. We know that works with kids, and it also works with adults, so it was great to see that. So it, it just was, um, a wonderful, uh, PD day, and I was very impressed. Mr. Simon, thank you for those words. We're, we're honored that you were able to be with us, as well as Ms. Park was able to be with us as well. So thank you both.
Uh, shall we move on to the next update?
Well, Madam Chair, the next two pieces on the update are just some narrative put to the two presentations that we're having this evening. So, um, uh, these are both, uh, presentations that will be introduced by Ms. Friend. So perhaps we can just transition into those pieces?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so at this point, Ms. Masterson, if, uh, Mr. Epstein is in the waiting room. Dr. Epstein, excuse me. Wonderful. Uh, so at this point, I'm going to turn it to Assistant Super- Superintendent Laura Friend to, uh, introduce our guest this evening.
Sure. Um, and I know Superintendent Downing, you could aptly introduce Dr. Epstein, so thank you for the honor of doing so, but we're, we're very pleased to welcome Dr. Epstein, uh, to speak for, I, I think we said about ten or twelve minutes to the committee this evening, just to provide broad strokes overview of calm, compassionate teaching. He's been working alongside our district for two years now, and we have grown so much, um, from his framing of understanding of student behavior. And he will, um, present to our families next Thursday evening at six thirty on impact of the pandemic and resiliency and problem solving for parents and educators and students, who we encourage our families to join us in that presentation next Thursday evening, six thirty via Zoom. Uh, link is in the comment, has been and will be again this Friday. But, uh, Dr. Epstein, I turn it over to you to, uh, impart your wisdom uh, in ten to twelve minutes, which I know you can do, um, but you have so much to share, and it's all about framing our thinking about student behavior and the communication, what behavior tells us. So thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me, Laura. I appreciate that, and, and I, I really, um, thank you all for, uh, I, I know your, your time is precious, and you have a lot on your plate, so I appreciate having a few moments um, just to share with you, uh, some of the work we've been doing and, and, and the orientation behind this work. Um, and, uh, and to, um, save a few minutes to have, uh, if you have any questions about, um, what I'm describing tonight. So, um, I, I, I want to preface this by saying that, that this work that I'm going to describe is part of broader efforts within the district to, um, address the social emotional learning needs of, of the students. And so, um, uh, Laura has been a fabulous partner in, in kind of, uh, addressing, um, some real important needs on, on, uh, on the part of the Nishoba students. Um, and so this is a piece of those efforts, uh, to, to help kids succeed, not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. I know I'm going to be preaching to the choir here a little bit when I say that, um, uh, you know, research, uh, uh, is pretty consistent that, that um, uh, teachers are, uh, consistently telling us one of the biggest stressors uh, in their jobs is managing difficult student behavior. Uh, and one of the biggest frustrations that teachers have is, um, the sort of lack of behavior change, lack of responsiveness to kind of some of our, you know, fairly, um, uh, widely used and traditional, um, behavior management tools. So, um, the, the work that we're doing is focusing on, um, this kind of small percentage of kids who take up a great deal of our time, because they, they have these sort of repeated challenging behaviors that don't um, respond to our, our typical interventions, right? So we are all familiar with um, some of the standard approaches that we use for kids who are misbehaving. Um, they tend to be very contingency-based. Um, uh, sometimes they're very positive in nature. We try to use rewards and incentives to get kids to behave in the ways that they're expected to behave, and if they don't behave in the ways that they're expected to behave, there are, are various consequences. Um, uh, removal of privileges, uh, um, uh, up to more, um, significant kinds of um, uh, consequences, uh, suspensions, uh, in-school suspensions, out-school suspensions, uh, and that kind of thing. And one of the things, again, that the research has, has shown pretty consistently is that, um, there are a, a large percentage of kids who are struggling behaviorally that don't respond to these traditional approaches. Um, in fact, uh, typically thirty to fifty percent of suspensions are repeat suspensions, and sort of by definition, those approaches, if they're working, should be self-eliminating. In other words, if they're working, we shouldn't have to continue to use them. So if we have kids who are misbehaving uh, um, in sometimes very serious ways, and we are using these kind of contingency approaches, rewards, consequences, incentives, and the like, and the behavior isn't changing, then by definition, those approaches aren't working. Um, there are reasons, uh, very clear. The research, uh, especially in kind of more recent years, has told us very clearly why those approaches have not worked for this, um, kind of small percentage of kids. Essentially, it's the kids that, uh, they, these approaches are applied to the most, that tend to benefit the least. Um, and, and that is because the mechanisms by which those approaches work are not applicable to some of our toughest students. And to illustrate this, I'm going to kind of do a thought experiment with you all. So I want you to imagine that you, um, you're going to the gym, you've decided you want to start working out, uh, you want to get stronger. Um, so you go to the gym, and you're working with the trainer, and the trainer, um, uh, hands you a couple of, um, uh, dumbbells to, uh, do some bicep curls, um, takes a look at you and says, these ought to work, and gives you a, a set of twenty-five pound, um, dumbbells to do some bicep curls, and you cannot do it. You just are not strong enough. Um, and, and, and they try and try, and eventually they get to the five-pounders, and you're like, yeah, I can do these. So you are only strong enough to lift these five-pounders, right? And your goal, the, the, the trainer is saying, you know, for a person your size and age, you should be able to, to lift twenty-five. And you just can't. You're not strong enough. Your muscles aren't strong enough. You can only do the five. And so now that trainer has a task. The trainer's task is to get you from the five pounds to the twenty-five pounds and maybe even beyond, right? So how is the trainer going to do that? Now, if this trainer said to you, look, buddy, here's the deal. You, you should be able to lift twenty-five pounds for your age, and actually, if you don't lift twenty-five pounds, there's going to be some serious consequences. You're not going to be able to lift groceries. You're not going to be able to lift your kids, so you need to lift this twenty-five pounds, and then gave you the twenty-five pounds again. Would you be able to lift it? Of course not. Now, what if this person said, all right, here's the deal. I'm going to give you fifty bucks if you can lift that twenty-five pounds, and you picked up the twenty-five pounds? You're going to lift it? Of course not. You're not strong enough. And let's say they even took it a step further. I'm gonna, I'm gonna deduct a hundred bucks from your bank account if you don't lift those twenty-five pounds. You're going to be motivated. You're going to be incentivized. Um, but you're not going to lift the twenty-five pounds. Why? Because right now, your strength is only enough to lift five pounds. Interestingly, this is the mechanism by mo- by which most of our traditional behavioral approaches are designed to work. They're designed to do two things. Teach information. You are expected to lift twenty-five pounds. That's what we expect of you. And try to motivate. If you lift those twenty-five pounds, I'm going to give you some cash, or if you don't, I'm going to take away some cash, right? So traditional contingency management approaches are designed to teach information and try to motivate. Here's the problem with that. If you don't have, in this case, the strength, or in the case of, of, of behavior, the skills to engage in that expected behavior, it doesn't matter if you have the information, the knowledge that this is expected of you, nor does it matter if you have the incentive. I really want that fifty bucks. If you don't have the skill, you're not going to meet that expectation, regardless of the information that you have and the incentive that you have. And interestingly, this is how, how our traditional behavioral approaches are designed to work, and the reason why they work for the kids who need them the least and don't work for the kids who they are applied to the most is because the kids who are consistently not meeting our behavioral expectations, who are, um, uh, consistently truant from school, not getting their homework in, engaging in, in, um, uh, physical aggression or verbal aggression in a, in a sort of consistent way, and aren't responding to those traditional interventions. That behavior continues to occur because they don't have the skills. Now, in the case of the, the, the weight training, we're talking about physical strength. But in the case of these behavioral expectations, we are talking about skills that have been identified, again, for a very long time. Daniel Goldman, um, pulled this information together beautifully about twenty-five years ago um, in his seminal book, uh, Emotional Intelligence, right? We're talking about things like your ability to We're talking about things like your ability to understand and recognize and label and articulate your feelings. We're talking about your ability to, um, control your impulses, to regulate your emotional state. We're talking about your ability to, um, uh, have, um, a perspective that allows you to think about the perspectives of others, not just yourself. Uh, we're talking about skills that allow you to plan and organize and, and focus. Uh, we're talking about, um, skills that allow you to think flexibly, not in a sort of rigid all or none way, but in a more gray um, nuanced kind of way. These are all skills that people need to navigate life's challenges. And if those skills are not where they should be for their age, then we see behavior problems. Now, I want you to think about, um, a two or a three-year-old, right? And think about some of the basic skills that a two or a three-year-old doesn't have because they're two or three. Um, they're not very good at managing their emotions. They're not very flexible in their thinking. They're not very good at, um, labeling their feelings, right? So what do we see? We see a lot of physical aggression. We see verbal aggression. We see tantrums and meltdowns. We see refusals to do things because they're two and three and that's expected. But as they get older and those skills develop, we see less and less of those behaviors because they're getting stronger in these skills and they can meet the expectations of their environment. There are kids who are wired in such a way that those skills don't develop at the pace that is expected. They have developmental delays in skills such as labeling and articulating their feelings, managing their emotions, tolerating frustration, thinking flexibly. And the way that that plays out in their environment is it comes out in inappropriate behaviors, refusals, uh, physical aggression, verbal aggression, all the kind of same things we see in younger kids because their skills are like a younger child. So, when we approach those kids in the ways that saying you can't behave this way and if you continue to behave this way, here are these, going to be these consequences. We don't get behavior change because these are about skill struggles, not poor motivation or lack of information. Now, here's the good news in, in terms of the schools. We already have a template in our schools, a very good template for addressing these kinds of skill delays and skill struggles. And that is our, um, a special education system, particularly when it applies to learning disabilities, right? So if I have a fifth grader reading at a first grade level and I've assessed what particular skills are delayed and I find that this student um, uh, does not process phonological information like a fifth grader. Um, does not make those sound symbol associations like a fifth grader that those skills are delayed. That those skills are more like a first grader. Do I come to that, that fifth grader and say, look buddy, you're expected to read like a fifth grader. And if you don't continue to read like a fifth grader, there's going to be some serious consequences here. Of course not. I would be thrown out of the special education system if that's how I approach the learning disability. No, what do we do? We teach the skills that are delayed and we do it incrementally in the same way that weight trainer isn't going to give me twenty-pound weights. It's going to give me five-pound weights and then maybe some ten-pound weights. And as I get more reps and practice, he's going to give me fifteen pounders. And then as I get some reps and practice, he's going to give me twenty and eventually I'm going to work my way up. And he's not going to be threatening me because I'm not lifting what I'm supposed to be lifting. We don't do that with learning disabilities. We wouldn't do that with weight training, but really we do that with behavior all the time. So in order to change behavior, we first and foremost have to change how we think about behavior. And we have to really understand that these difficulties, these behaviors that we are seeing are an indication of skill struggles. And based on that, we have to come at it not by teaching information. You are expected to behave this way. Frankly, most of these kids already know that, but to teach the skill to help them. And first of all, we have to identify what the skills are, right? If I have a kid who's not reading at a first grade level because of phonological processing, that's different than if it's an issue of, say, um, verbal fluency, right? So I have to identify which of these skills, and oftentimes there's many, are delayed. And then I have to teach those skills in an incremental manner that kids can slowly build because skills don't, you don't go from five to twenty-five pounds. You don't go from reading at a first grade level to a fifth grade level. And you don't go from struggling to regulate your emotions to being great at it. Skills develop incrementally. And so we have to scaffold the environment and, and, uh, approach the child in a way that reduces demands for the level of skill that they don't have and give them the practice they need to slowly build those skills. Um, okay, I think that was about, uh, ten to twelve minutes. So, um, that's, uh, obviously there's much more to that. And Laura was being very kind when she said I can do this in ten to twelve minutes because I have trouble sometimes conveying all of this in, uh, one to two hours. So that's a really fast, um, uh, quick uh, nitty gritty overview of what we're doing here. And I will say before I, uh, open it up to some questions, um, I have been really pleased and impressed, um, by the, by the level of skill and commitment and dedication on the part of, of Neshoba staff that I've been working with. They are really embracing this. They're working on it. This is not easy work. Um, because at the risk of stating the obvious, if I have a fifth grader who's reading at a first grade level, they're probably not disrupting the learning of other students. They're probably not creating safety concerns. But when kids who struggle with these social emotional skills, when they're struggling with those, oftentimes the result is some real serious, um, concerns about um, safety of other students, disruption of the learning environment. So this is hard work, but I've been so um, pleased with, uh, uh, the dedication and the commitment and the, um, real openness to kind of coming at this in, in what's really still considered not a, a very traditional way. Um, and, and we've seen some really nice, um, progress in, in the work that we've been doing. So with that, I, I will, um, stop talking and see if there are particular questions that any of you have.
Um, while I'm waiting to see if any of my, um, fellow members of the school committee, oh, I see a hand up. Um, so I'm going to go to Mike and then come back to what I was going to say. Uh, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Epstein. That was awesome. Um, you know, I'm, I'm one hundred percent philosophically on board with you. As you were, um, you know, using these metaphors, I, you know, the first thing I thought of was um, my own classroom and recognizing deficits, um, um, or sort of like emerging skills. And I wonder how you manage, um, the time constraints that are a reality in the classroom, right? So I've got a kiddo who's, who's got a skill limitation or is developing a skill and we work towards it and we work with them and um, and in the meantime, I've got a handful of kids that are sort of moving forward. And while we're developing this skill, that creates this unintended consequence of a a, a content lag. So how do you manage both slowly developing a skill and also keeping pace with the timeline that is a reality in most classrooms?
It's a really good question and it's a really, um, significant challenge, right? What I would, um, uh, there are a couple of things and, and obviously in the time that we have, it's, it's hard to go into tremendous detail. But what, what I'll say broadly speaking is that, uh, there are a couple of things we need to do. Uh, one is I always say go slow to go fast. Oftentimes, the way that we sort of intervene actually ends up making some of that progress take even longer. So the first thing we need to do is really set up with, um, what one of my mentors, Dr. Ross Green calls a user-friendly environment. By understanding this particular student's skill profile, we can scaffold things in the classroom in a way that helps maximize, um, their progress. And, um, oftentimes a lot of our practice actually, our practices actually not only don't maximize their, their progress, slow it down. We, we intervene in ways that, that are just frustrating for kids that, that end up them, with them spending less time in the classroom. Uh, um, so what we really need to do, I mean, one of the best ways to think about this is we need to differentiate for those students in the same way that we differentiate for kids who have academic struggles, right? And those students are also not necessarily going to be progressing at the same rate, um, uh, as, um, the other students in the classroom. But how we structure their environment can make a tremendous difference. And yes, there will be limitations because when you have these skill deficits, it does impact, um, you know, the, the rate of progress. But there are things we can do to maximize the progress and, um, oftentimes the things that, the way we're structuring environments for these kids actually slows it down, if that makes sense.
Thanks for that question, Mike. I also saw Dana's hand up. So why don't we go to her next?
I do want to say this is a great presentation. So I'm not in the educational field. So hearing about social emotional learning from this perspective, I feel like was really valuable. Specifically understanding that these issues are lack of skills. Um, so what I'm curious about though, would you say if this is a new problem facing schools and teachers? Like, is this something that used to be taught at home and now we're no longer seeing that? I just didn't know if you have any sense of like root cause or this expectations changing, becoming higher? Is this just, I don't know, some sort of generational shift that you would see?
Uh, it's, it's a really good question. Uh, and, and what I would say is no, this isn't a new problem at all. Um, now, I'll, I'll put a little caveat to that, which is to say that, uh, certainly, um, in recent years and obviously we, we are dealing with, um, uh, a fallout still from the pandemic that has really, not only, um, uh, we've seen, uh, um, impact academically, but we have certainly seen social emotional impact, uh, rates of depression, um, and anxiety among youth uh, really, um, have dramatically increased just in the past few years attributed to a lot of what, um, kind of went on, uh, during the pandemic. So in that regard, yes, there is some um, newness to the intensity of that. But that aside, thi- this isn't new at all. In the same way that, um, learning disabilities, you know, it's, it's interesting. We started addressing just historically, I'll tell you kind of very quickly, right? We didn't really start to address the skill deficits associated with learning disabilities in a, in a, in a broader way until the early seventies, right? That's when the initial special education laws passed. But we knew about the skill deficits of learning disabilities as early as the early nineteen hundreds. There was a nineteen oh nine paper published identifying some of these skill deficits. So these struggles aren't new. It's just that it takes a while for the research to kind of catch up with the practices. And so this information about these kinds of skill struggles, this, kids have always had these, these skill struggles. And I know sometimes we hear a lot about, um, you know, you know, back in my day, uh, you know, we didn't treat people this way and that kind of thing. Kids have struggled in this way for a very long time. We have learned a lot even in the past twenty, twenty-five years about this. But these, uh, these kinds of struggles have existed, uh, you know, really since the dawn of time. Now, whole another can of worms to talk about, um, uh, um, cell phones and social media and, and, and the ways that that impacts kids' social emotional functioning, which is uh, a somewhat more recent phenomenon that certainly has an impact. But in terms of this overall dynamic, this isn't new, um, at all. We just, um, have a, a much better understanding, um, than we used to.
Okay. And just one more quick question.
Sure.
Do you think that like the shift from like removing certain authority that individual classroom teachers used to have is helping or hurting this skills gap?
Uh, well, it's a great question and it really, um, it actually, the, it, it, it poses another question, which is what we mean by authority and how we define authority? So, um, uh, in, in this approach, we define authority somewhat differently. A, a person in a position of authority, a disciplinarian, if you will, is a teacher. And again, what we're trying to teach is not you are supposed to do what you are told. What we are trying to teach are the skills that enable kids to do what they're told. Enable kid to handle life's challenges. So, um, so it's a, it's a more nuanced question that is not just, you know, are we, have, have we undermined, um, teachers' authority? It's really, um, more about how we define, thinking more complexly about how we define authorities. Authorities are in a position to teach and it's not, again, teaching information. You should do what you're told by people in power. In fact, I don't think in the broader sense of things, that's what we want to teach. It's, we want to teach you skills to be able to handle life. And that's where I think we're falling short.
All right. This is, thank you so much for the question and the answer, Dr. Epstein. I see Jackie has her hand up. So we'll go to her next.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Epstein. And if any of our families and community members are watching to take advantage of the opportunity to hear you speak next week because like using your, um, your weight analogy, right? Like when you're with one trainer and you can lift five pounds, but then you go at home or in the community and you're with a different trainer and you can lift two pounds, like we all have to have that same language. So it's a good opportunity and an amazing resource for our district. So I'm just encouraging our, our community to take advantage of this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you stole my thunder there, Jackie. Um, I, I think this is, uh, personally, I want to just express my gratitude for, um, having to the administration for bringing Dr. Epstein um, to the school committee so we can benefit from learning about the professional development he's offering our educators. Um, I think it's you know, going to benefit all the students in our district. It's, it's very student centered and it, it, I really love how it sounds like the focus here is to meet kids where they're at, you know, and, um, and not demand them to whatever standards we're setting for them. So, um, with that, I don't see any other hands up. Um, is there anything that you'd like to conclude with, Dr. I mean Superintendent Downing?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. No, I personally want to thank Dr. Epstein for coming tonight. I, I know that Dr. Epstein does great work and has great impact on schools. Um, and so, Dr. Reiner, thank you for that plug for, uh, next week's Zoom meeting with our families. And we're looking forward to continuing working with Dr. Epstein as we grow and expand this approach across the, uh, the school system. So thank you, Dr. Epstein.
Just one last.
Thank you for having me. Yeah.
So sorry to cut you off. Do, do parents need to register in advance? To get that, okay, it's just, uh, thanks.
Yeah, no, we sent the link, the link out in the comment last week. And I think we're going to be doing some targeted emails in anticipation of that meeting that are outside of our regular sending of the comment.
Perfect. All right.
And I'll just, uh, add there, I, I appreciate the plug and, and, you know, the, the goal tonight was to give you kind of the overview of, of what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um, uh, for folks to know, uh, the, um, the parent night that I'm going to be doing next week, we're going to really be, um, getting more into some practical strategies for how we teach kids, um, uh, these skills that they're struggling with. So, um, I, I'm looking forward to that opportunity as well. So thank you. And thank you for the um, chance to share with you this, uh, important work.
You're very, very welcome. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's see, um, I think there's one more item left on the superintendent's update. Is that correct? The innovation?
We have our Innovation Pathways report and I see Dr. Boynton is coming to the room and I think Mr. A is coming into the room as well. Yes, there's Star Rose. Um, so, so last week, uh, you had an opportunity to hear about the Innovation Pathways, uh, work that we're doing here, uh, in Neshoba. I'm going to turn it again back to Assistant's tent to introduce our guest presenters tonight, uh, regarding Innovation Pathways. So Assistant Superintendent Friend.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, with definitely passing the baton around.
It is. It is that type of, a little bit of a catch up.
I am so pleased to introduce my colleagues, Dr. Boynton. I'm going to try and say Mr. A's whole name. M- Mr. Andriopoulos and Mr. LeBlanc, who are critical members of our Innovation Pathways Planning Team. Thank you for being here tonight and for all of your hard work for the past year and a half, maybe even two years, two years, um, to help pres- to help get us, uh, to this place, which is this evening presenting an Innovation Pathways Planning presentation to you. We have been talking a lot about innovation pathways and referencing innovation pathways. And so this evening, we're excited to provide you with what it's all about. An overview of our pathways program, what the pathways are, what they will mean for our students, the timeline, next steps, some exciting information. the timeline, next steps, some exciting information and updates that Dr. Boynton specifically is going to share. And what we see these pathways are for us at Neshoba and that hopefully is just the beginning in a critical, exciting next step in our future at Neshoba. So we're going to take turns um, with the slides, the short presentation, and then we'll offer to the committee any questions at the end. And I believe that Alita is going to share. Is that true, Alita? Or? Oh, yeah. And while Alita gets back to slide one, I know it's in Canva, which is, is not as intuitive as PowerPoint or Google Slides. Stop being an innovator, Mr. A.
My apologies.
All right, there we go. So as I had mentioned, um, we're going to tag team the presentation this evening. We're just so super excited about the possibilities for our innovation pathways program and the opportunity for real world, relevant experiential learning for our students. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Boynton, who is going to speak to um, slide two, three, and four. Why, what, and what it's all about.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Friend. Can everyone hear me? I'm trying on my AirPods tonight. So I would be remiss if I didn't share that this really is an endeavor, two years in the making. Last year, um, Mr. Le Blank, um, and a, a, a sort of a, an adventurous group of, of staff members began the exploration of the innovation pathways during professional learning time um, at the high school and made the point of um, going on several visits to high schools that were implementing and became really, really excited. And so they were sort of the vanguard of the push to really deeply explore the pathways at Neshoba. Also, Starros and his hard work all of this year. The, the team of teachers who um, was yeoman's work to, to put together our grant application. And we couldn't have done this without the support of Laura Friend and Teaching and Learning. Our why um, behind the pathways is really to design more engaging, meaningful, real world learning experiences for our Neshoba students. A part of the pathways is to create robust post-secondary options for all Neshoba students, um, whether they be in career, in service, in military or in college. Um, and you'll notice that there is, uh, it's deeply rooted in equity. And a focus on fields that have been identified by the state of Massachusetts as high needs. And so it's data driven as well, taking a look at the future of professional careers and the, the world of work um, in, in Massachusetts for our students as they down the line enter the workforce. Alita, next slide, please. So pathways, pathways are in essence, real world experiential learning for our students, both technical and advanced coursework, coursework that take place within Neshoba's course of study. Strong partnerships. So one of the foundations are these strong partner partnerships with employers to expose students to career options as well as discovery experiences within a chosen field of study before they graduate high school. And then the culminating piece again is through this one hundred hour internship and capstone experience that students engage in, in their senior year. And one of the things that we've heard from our students is that this type of real world experiential learning is something that they are really, really interested in wanting to do at the high school level. Next slide, please. So Commonwealth established, um, the, I think career pathways has been around um, since about twenty seventeen, eighteen, so just pre-COVID. And the Commonwealth has recently established a goal of having fifty percent of students in these high quality college and career pathways by the year of twenty twenty-seven. And so far, a hundred and seventy-seven schools in Massachusetts have received this DSE designation. Some schools have pathways that are their own design. But these are specifically designated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And then one in four high schools in Massachusetts either has an established pathway program or is in the application process. Uh, and I am thrilled to announce and share in the middle of our presentation that we had an interview on Friday, March twenty-second with Jennifer Guatkin, who was our liaison with the pathways program. And she gave us a preliminary um, uh, notification that we have been um, named a pathway designated school. And um, we got her permission to share that this evening. We shared that we were presenting to you all this evening. So I'm thrilled to share that Neshoba Regional High School will be a pathway designated school uh, for um, business and finance, as well as advanced manufacturing and engineering. And that also comes um, with some grant funding as well. We also learned at that meeting that we are the recipient of a skills capital grant as well. And so more details down the line when we get communication. So phenomenal news for Neshoba, really exciting. And my understanding through Jennifer is that there'll be an official announcement as early as tomorrow, a press release from from, I believe, the governor as well as DSE joint press release as early as tomorrow, communicating those, those pathway, pathway designated schools of which Neshoba is a part. So yay, we got it. And next slide, please. And I'm happy to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend.
So um, yeah, the, these, the next two slides are just the articulation of the clear connection to our strategic plan. Specifically, strategic initiative number seven and strategic objective number two are teaching and learning objective. And that is um, for us to work towards increasing authentic experiential learning opportunities across all classrooms, K to twelve. And so specifically, this initiative, this implementation of pathways programming supports our experience for our students in nine through twelve. But this work will also start in grade seven as we had intimated at the last school committee meeting with our my work on my cap during uh, middle school advisory. So clear connections to our strategic plan. And then next slide, clear connections to our portrait of a Neshoba graduate. And we, when we were putting together this slide, we, we kind of went back and forth, which competency um, do the pathways work to support, elevate and strengthen? And I think our, our decision was all of them, right? Starros and Andy were like, and Kate, it, it, it just touches upon all of them. Giving students an opportunity to develop these skills in real world opportunities that um, are going to give them an opportunity to transfer what they're learning in the classroom to different domains, disciplines and experience and environments is going to create the environment by which they can really exercise their development of these skills for when they leave us at Neshoba. So the answer is all six of them. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. A and he's going to speak. Oh, um, actually, Dr. Boynton, did you want to speak to the school improvement plan and your work on student engagement as it relates to the innovation pathways?
I can just do a quick add-on that, um, that the pathways are intimately included in, in the school improvement plan. So I'm happy to say that we've achieved that. And I strongly believe that the technical courses, along with the availability to take advanced courses that both Starros and Andy will talk about later, along with the capstone project, those naturally enhance um, student um, levels of engagement and are one hundred percent in line with the goals of our school improvement plan, which is aligned with the strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Boynton. All right, Mr. Andriopoulos.
Good evening.
Would you like to speak to us about business?
I would love to. I'm, I'm happy to be here today. I'm um, really happy to follow the great news that Dr. B just shared with you guys. It was a lot of hard work, but um, definitely going to be an awesome opportunity for our students. Um, as they shared, I'm here to talk to you guys about the business pathway. Um, I think you guys are really familiar with DECA and the success that DECA and the, um, the growth that we've had over the last ten, fifteen years at the high school. Uh, I think a lot of that is because when students take business classes, they see that real world connection in, in the business classes that we offer at the high school. Uh, our business pathway is going to be very similar to DECA in that fashion where we are going to create a lot of those real world connections uh, with the pathway. But honestly, it's going to go way, way beyond what DECA does because a lot of the, the, the DECA projects that we do are hypothetical. And they kind of just live in a vacuum and they get presented to one judge and then off they go. Creating these real world experiences where students can get out of the classroom into an internship or a capstone project. You know, we have some great teachers at the high school, but getting industry professionals to mentor and tutor them along the way is going to be a massive, massive win for our school and, and getting students ready for the, their next step. So in the business pathway, I know the word business is really wide and all encompassing. Um, obviously there's marketing, finance, entrepreneurship, accounting, economics. Students currently have all these offerings at the high school and we're going to continue to expand these as we go. I know that um, we have a lot of strong partners in our district, um, a lot of good, great businesses and a lot of Neshoba alums that run those businesses in our community that are really eager to work with us. And we're really looking forward to the future here. Uh, next slide, please. The scope and sequence for our uh, program is going, is currently looks like this for next year. So um, a pathway student in their freshman or sophomore year are going to be looking at completing technical courses. Those technical courses are, uh, for lack of a better term, just normal business uh, classes that students take in Neshoba right now. Those courses would be intro to business, uh, marketing or computer applications. We identified those three classes, um, mostly intro to business is a great fit because it, it, it honestly, it, it's a taste of all the industries that we just talked about, all the career clashes that we just talked about on the previous slide. Marketing is a very, very popular course for students and obviously, um, no matter what industry you go into, even if it's not in the business industry, it's, it's really a great skill to have. And then we all know that computer application skills and knowing your Canva and putting together a really innovative presentation, but also your Microsoft Office certifications um, that students can uh, learn and get really important industry recognized credentials along the way are going to be great for us. Once they fulfill the technical record, uh, requirement, they would move on to advanced courses. We currently offer um, accounting, um, our accounting course at the high school right now is uh, has a an articulation agreement with Quincyman Community College. So uh, that's already built for us where students could take it for Neshoba credits, but also take it for college level credits. As you guys know, advanced placement psych, uh, psychology or in statistics also would count for co- college credits, uh, product development. The course that you guys see there in the middle of the screen is a new course that we plan on launching that this year for the very, oh, sorry, in the, in the fall for the very first time. We're really excited about that course because it fits really, really well with the business, marketing, entrepreneurship side of things. But also with the pathway that uh, Andy Le Blank is about to speak to you guys a little bit about. So it's kind of a two birds, one stone, but also some of the most innovative entrepreneurship type of classes that I've ever seen. Uh, have a lot of that business, but also the engineering side too. So we're really excited to offer that next year for the first time. Of course, this whole experience uh, concludes with a one hundred hour internship in capstone, which is honestly, the most exciting part about it all, where students could leave the building or even stay in the building and get that real world experience. I'm going to pass it over to um, Andy Le Blank, who is the whole reason we're here, to be honest. He brought this idea to our school and uh, it's, it's really awesome to kind of get it off the ground with him. He's a great teacher. He's going to be running the advanced manufacturing, engineering side of things.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Andrea Apple's. Quite an introduction. Yeah, so as I um, was investigating the, these pathways, um, the more and more few folks that I talked to that were involved across the state pretty much told us we're doing eighty or ninety percent of it already. And by adding a couple more things, we really could uh, give our students these, these experiences and be able to make connections and and really grow and, and, and prepare themselves for either career or for the workplace. So um, I think um, in, in both these pathways, that's what we're, we're, we're looking to provide. So as we spoke with um, our local workforce uh, labor boards, they identified central Massachusetts as having a high need uh, for workers in these, these areas that you see up on, on the screen. So um, you know, technicians and infrastructure sustainability is really going to be taken off in the future. Uh, but we're also, you know, we need more manufacturing engineers in this area as well, as well as industrial engineers. Um, and also people can design, fix and work with robots. I mean, that's, that's, those are all things that are being developed right here in Massachusetts. And I think uh, the, this pathway is going to be an, an incredible way to connect students with all these, these different areas. Next slide. Thank you. Um, so in my area, um, our freshman, next year's freshmen and sophomores would be able to take the engineering drawing courses uh, which are CAD related. Uh, we do a lot of three D printing, uh, robotics and drones. We're, we're competing in different competitions, uh, getting a lot of, a full year experience with that. And then the metal and wood shop fabrication courses. With these classes, they would receive an OSHA certification, an OSHA ten, which I've already, we've done, we've been doing it for a couple of years and I've heard a lot of students come back to me and say, hey, it got me a raise or got me get my foot in the door uh, to get a, even a summer job. Uh, but we will continue to provide that. It would, that would be the first uh, kind of check mark that they would achieve. Um, and after that, their junior and senior, um, we're going to take some training this, this, this summer in Project Lead the Way, which is a really robust, robust uh, engineering course. Uh, as long as, as well as that um, product development course that Mr. Mr. A was talking about. Uh, and then students can also take AP physics. Um, so if, if they take two of those courses, they'd be able to um, move on and there's, there's spring semester of their senior year. Uh, we'll be looking for internships in capstones. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to report that the more that we get this out, the more businesses are contacting us and letting us know that they're interested in the show with students and they want, they want to have kids come and work at their places. So I think, I think we're in the right path and, and this is uh, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alita, can you do the next slide? We have to, uh, just a couple more slides. Starros, I think this one's you.
No problem. So as Andy said, we've been um, out there hitting, hitting the streets, talking to the community that engaging our stakeholders. So obviously it begins with students and families and then um, a lot of internal staff, the guidance counselors, deans are the ones that will help us grow the program. So those discussions are well underway. Andy and I were just at a uh, at Link in, at the Lancaster and Bolton Middle Schools yesterday, meeting our, our future freshmen, which are just great kids. Uh, we really enjoyed that opportunity yesterday. Uh, we'll be heading into Stowe on Friday. Besides the internal stakeholders, we actually, um, Laura and I in, in a group of students recently met with our local Rotary Club. We were at the Holden Building, which I learned was the initial high school about hundred years ago, which is really cool to go see and all the history in that building. But uh, we have a really, like I said earlier, we have a, a really rich community with filled with Neshoba alumni that are, are really, you know, we're looking forward to the, uh, creating those partnerships with. We already have uh, three articulation, oh, sorry, uh, partnership agreements signed and, and, and formalized, uh, one in the business side of things and two in the um, advanced manufacturing and engineering side. So we have had a lot of discussions. We've had three formal agreements too with our local businesses, which is really, really exciting. Uh, we plan to uh, create a student ambassador program. One of our ideas is to pilot the, this program, the uh, with a couple juniors, uh, sorry, current sophomores that will uh, turn into ambassadors and help us grow the program. And then uh, one thing that we've really um, have been talking about recently is getting into our And then uh, one thing that we've really um, have been talking about recently is getting into our school councils, our CPAC. And um, in gr- in 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 having a really. You know, advanced conversations with those groups, uh, because this pathway program is for everyone. It's not just. For high achieving students, it's for all students. So. Um, we have been talking quite a bit with a lot of stakeholders in our community.
And I, I would just say, uh, Starros, that I have done that. I have visited with the school councils and the CPAC. Um, to spread the word. Uh, the next step is, is the other two elementary schools, but I've, I've been running the gauntlet, spreading the word. And then I think the last slide is back to Dr. Boynton, and then we're going to finish up. And sorry, Alita, the, the slide transition is, is not facile with Canva. I guess that's it. What's next?
I can speak to what's next. Um, and and actually it's in process because Starros uh, spoke to this already that. Um, he and Andy, uh, along with some students have gone down, um, gone over to the middle schools, uh, last middle school, uh, it will be in uh, at Hale on Friday, right? Starros, as you mentioned, um, I did get great feedback from Sean and Mr. O'Shea as well as um. As Mr. Bates, that the presentations were wonderful. Um, and there's a buzz in the, amongst the eighth graders in Lancaster and Bolton uh, about this. And also some targeted meetings and informational sessions with our um, guidance councils at the middle school as well as our deans and teachers. Um, to inform folks, um, I will say that, that um, Starros came and presented to all the principals last week at our principal's meeting to inform. Them about um, our pathways project in the anticipation of us um, securing uh, the designation, um, so that that presentation happened before. Our, our interview um, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have a, a family uh, informational Zoom meeting that will be taking place on April second at seven PM, uh, and information has gone out to families about that. Um, I know that we're in the, the works of signing up uh, Andy as well as um, Dan Barabee for Project Lead the Way Training for our lead teachers. Uh, and then we are um, continuing to explore enhanced partnerships with local higher education to develop advanced coursework. Look at additional opportunities for dual enrollment, um, for our students, for um, participation and and, you know, enrollment in the advanced coursework. So in addition to our Quincy agreement, we're looking at um, other opportunities for um, higher education. Uh, partnerships. And then we uh, plan to implement in the fall of twenty twenty four, uh, really, really excited. Um, and so with that, I will end the presentation and turn it over to questions that any one of us can respond to.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boynton. Let me uh, look around. I see uh, Dana has her hand up. So why don't you start us off?
Um, so I just wanted to see if you received the email I sent you about Beaver Works because I work at MIT Lincoln Lab and there's a great summer program that I think feeds. Like right into all of this, um, that I could think would be a great opportunity for our high school to be able to participate in.
Uh, who's that question for?
Oh.
You're, you're muted, Dana.
Sorry, that was for Dr. Boyan.
I will have to double check uh, and get back to you to see. Uh, I think that sounds wonderful. I think Beaver Works, I've heard great things about it. Um, and then if it turns into something um, uh, that would be a great partnership, I think Starros and Andy and I would love to. To learn more about how that could work.
Okay, perfect. If you can't find it, just reach out and I will resend you the information.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, uh, on to Sharon.
Um, I just wanted to say, this is just so exciting. It's, I, I just can't. I can't even think of another word. This is just awesome. Um, and I want to thank you, each of you, um. For your vision and for your work. Um, and for your commitment to getting this program going, um, to creating this, it's, it's just awesome. Um, I do have a question. And my question is, um. So it looks like there are two pathways programs, the business pathway and the advanced manufacturing. And within each of those, there's multiple options of different. Paths, I guess. I'm not quite sure what the right word is, but uh, that kids can follow on there. Um. I'm wondering, is there opportunities for this to grow into more programs as? As this gets up and running, obviously, um, but in, in the future, is there? Um, options to create more pathways?
Yeah, I don't mind taking this one. So uh, currently the, the state of Massachusetts uh, offers five different pathways. So manufacturing is the. The most uh, common and most widely adopted in the, out of all the designated schools so far. Um, information pathway is another option that we're really excited to grow into the future that. Encompasses computer science or our digital creativity offerings that we. Uh, have. Andy said this early, earlier and he was totally right. We have a lot of these offerings at the high school already. Uh, just formalizing the, the pathway and in making sure that we have all our ducks in the row is, is um. It, it, it sounds easier than it really is. It's a lot of hard work to make sure uh, we, we, we have it in line for the state, but. Uh, we do have eighty to ninety percent of it done like uh, Andy alluded to earlier. Uh, besides information, uh, business and finances, obviously the other pathway that we have, but. Environmental and life sciences, healthcare and social assistance. Um, and uh, the state is actually doing a uh, clean energy uh, pilot this year that only a, a, a select few. High schools from around the state were able to apply for, and that was only uh, schools that already had existing pathways. So. Um, definitely room to grow and we're excited to do that in the future, but um, we did a, 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 a pretty big study in the, in the early fall where we surveyed. Our eighth graders, but also our current uh, high school students. And uh, these are the two pathways that um, were overwhelmingly. Uh, selected by our students in our data.
Right. Thank you for, for that clarification. I, I know, actually didn't realize that the choice of pathways was um, driven by student choice. And I think that makes it all the more impactful.
Can I follow up for a minute?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I want to make sure that I, I didn't mean to imply that um. You should work more or work harder. This is an enormous undertaking and um. It's incredible. I just am excited about it. So I'm wondering, you, you know, as you get it up and running, where's, where can it, where else can it go? So I just want to make sure that you know that I'm not, I wasn't. Thinking that you hadn't done enough. I'm thinking this is really cool.
Sharon, we're just exci- as excited as you are. Honestly, we, if we could adopt all pathways right now, we would. Um, and there, there was some rationale behind the two, uh, and that was something that our contact, Jennifer Guatkins, actually said. That it actually, um, it, it's um, a, a better lift for a school if, if they move forward with two pathways in their initial. Um, and then explore additional pathways, um, in, you know, once you get your, your, kind of your groove. With the pathways and maybe the second year to then move into looking at other areas to expand. But we're like, we're energized and jazzed to do that.
Anybody else have anything uh, they'd like to? Ask? I don't see any hands. So I, I did have two um, two clarifying questions, but before I say them, I just want to offer. Congratulations to the whole team that put this together. Um. You know, this, on behalf of the school committee, we are so proud of the Neshova Regional School District for. This work and what I'm most excited about is that this is something that's going to be starting. Next year and will impact students at the high school now. And I know that that has been something that we've talked about as a school committee. Um, you know, what can we? Change now? And, and so I'm just so thrilled. Um, my question is, if, if we could just get some clarification around. Who is eligible for this pathway next year?
Um, I think Dr. Boynton is going to take this one. She and I talked about this potential question.
Okay, absolutely. Um, so Amy, the um. Eight, current eighth graders are eligible to express interest and that's partly what the presentations to the middle schools have been about. They learned a little bit about it. We mentioned it at our initial, um, our initial kind of presentations to the eighth grade. Um, I know Starros had a, a display set up um, at our future freshman night in January. Um, but now that it's, it's like, it's real, we, we feel that we're able to do full court press, right? It does coincide with our eighth grade course signups, and I know that there's a deadline there. Um, however, we have a whole month. Between when course deadlines are, um, it's course sign up deadline is, is April first. We have a whole month to do any kind of. Adjustments or massaging of this, of course, signups based on the pathways that students express interest in. Um, so there is plenty of time, even though the deadline is April first, there's plenty of time to get that uh, recommendation and for our current eighth graders. Our current ninth graders as well are, um, it's sort of an open field for any of our current ninth graders. To express interest and that's happening through the course recommendation process at the high school level. Um, with the same caveat that there is a, a full month to do any kind of adjustments needed before we have to. Um, really work on finalizing the schedule. So our guidance department is poised to, to do that and will be working really closely with us. And then as Starros mentioned, one of the things that we are exploring is a, a sort of ambassador status. And uh, and those would be our current tenth graders who have already taken some of the business courses that would be the technical courses. Um, I don't think any of them, Starros, you can correct me if I'm wrong, have delved into what would be the advanced coursework, but they've got some good solid technical courses. And they could be our vanguard. Um, and actually Jennifer Guatkins, our liaison over at Desi is supportive of that. So we have some, some students who are well on the way and it could be ambassadors and really um, could, could in fact be our, our first cohort of. Um, students who achieved pathway designation, um, their senior year, um, because it will take us about a year or so to get the capstone experience. Really flushed out. And so it's just making sure that they're advancing in their coursework and they'll be, they'll be our vanguard and our ambassadors to help us. Um, share the program. And we know that students love to hear from students, um, more so than adults. So, um, and I, I can. I wasn't at the middle schools, but I know that our kiddos did a great job. Um, I heard, I heard as much. Hopefully that answered your question. And then after that, it's, it's classes kind of rolling up and each pathway can accept a certain number of students. If we have more um, applicants, we have a lottery process. We're hoping to, to, to fill the pathways. Um, quite honestly, that, that's our sincerest hope and excitement to do. Um, Andy and Starros definitely jump in if I miss anything there.
I think you answered my question. I just wanted to get some clarification around the eighth grade class and the timing of it because I have an eighth grader and I know that. My override forms or whatever I do on April first, but I know that Zoom meeting is April second. I just want to make. Wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to prevent, you know, anything, but it sounds like it's.
Not at all. And it will, we'll definitely make sure that we speak to that at the parent meeting on April second and share um, sort of. The contact people, you know, the appropriate contact people to ensure um, that the, the course. Um, the course requests and in specifically the interest in a particular pathway. Receive, you know, is received by the appropriate people so that we make sure that that um. Any adjustments need to be made will make, will be made.
Okay. The other question I had is, um, I'm, you know, I'm not. I'm not that familiar with how this all works and the capstone project sounds like it's a senior year thing. So does that translate into credits that the students earn or is this some, like a stamp on their transcript or both or? How, how does that work in terms of meeting a minimum credit requirement and courses senior year?
Starros and Andy, I'll take that as well. Our cat, the capstone would be a, a course. So we'll be developing a course, capstone internship. Um, it comes with um. The guidance and supervision of a coordinator. Uh, and so there is uh. Seat time coursework that's done with the, the, within the confines of, of the capstone and internship program. We're still naturally working out the details. Um, but a lot of schools um, send their students off either last period of the day or if they're doing any offsite work. And then other schools use a model where um, a student will use a portion of their fourth, fourth quarter. Um, to go off and do some of, of the in-person uh, internship experiences. Um, we have uh, some schools as models who are doing sort of a hybrid capstone internship that is more uh, virtual in nature and, and then. Um, our industry partners, um, they push into the high school. So all of that is under development, but it is credit bearing. Um, so they will earn credits for that. Um, and no, no issue at all in terms of, you know, earning credits and, and, and meeting all of our graduation requirements. It is, it's credit bearing and in part of, um, and will be incorporated within our full curriculum.
Awesome. All right. Thank you so much. That was really. Um, some really um, information rich presentations there, but it was also important to hear and it's going to directly impact our students. So thank you so much. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Downing, but I think that wraps up your portion of the meeting with the update.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to present. I really appreciate it.
Educators for coming this evening.
All right. You guys are free to go get on with the rest of your night and we're going to keep trucking along. I think we are running a few minutes behind here. So I'm going to see if we can. Get caught back up. Um. So we have done, we are now on item, um, item seven C of our new business because items A and B were the presentations that we just heard. And that is the Retiree School Volunteers Association donation to Lawrence Sawyer School. Uh, Kirk, are you able to?
Yeah, if this one I'll bring for Finance and Operations Director Ross Moll Karen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be quick given, um, we have a, a long agenda still ahead. Um, so essentially, you know, without getting to every word here, but there is a retiree. Um, School Volunteers Association made up of Raytheon, um, retired engineers. And my understanding is that group is um. The organization's coming to an end. So they've made donations to schools that they've worked with previously. So they've made this donation, the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the Florence Sawyer School. Um, and we are seeking just approval for the Florence Sawyer School to accept that donation and put it towards extracurricular. Uh, materials and supplies that may be needed in the future for any STEM related uh, extracurriculars that they have at their school.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, Joe, do you have a motion that you'd like to make on? This.
No, thank you, Vice Chairman. Um. Excuse me, move to accept the donation from the Tyree School Volunteers Association. In the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, the donation will be used to support Florence Sawyer School STEM related extracurricular activities.
I can second that motion. Is there any discussion? All right. It's a very nice thing for them to do. So I will take the vote. Uh, Joe.
Yes.
Um, Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Shandor.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Sharon? Okay, I see a thumbs up. We'll count that as a yes myself. Yes, Jackie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Did I forget anybody? Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep. Um, moving on, the next item is the first in. Some policies that we are going to be reading for the first time tonight. Um, so with that. I am going to hand this off to the policy chairperson, Ms. Vessels. Amy, you are up.
Okay, um, so the, the first one, uh, we're just going to go through each one and I'm going to take notes on um. Things that people have to say about it and, you know, we can have a discussion if people have questions. Um, there's a couple, there's a few of them that we had questions on ourselves that we wanted to bring. To the committee. Um, so when we get to those. Um, so I guess the first one that's listed there is EFC.
Madam Chair, may I just interject from?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Vessels, please forgive me for the interruption. Um, this is our first reading. So for folks going through this, this is our opportunity just to take a, a general look at it. Uh, we'll be coming back to the committee with a second re- uh, reading where we will get to it in more detail. Uh, recognizing that you're seeing these policies for the very first time. So. Uh, it's not necessary to dive deep into all the technical pieces of it tonight. This is the cursory look. This is the cursory look. Second reading is where we'll get into more detail.
Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that Kirk. I kind of do it as we all have homework to do. After today. Take it home, look at it, come back with thoughts.
Okay. So I guess any questions about, um, I guess I should just leave it open to, does anybody have a question about one of the policies? I guess we'll just leave it at that.
Would you be able to just give us some background on why these policies came to you? Were these things that the MSBA, I mean, so sorry, not the MSBA. Gotta switch my brain from one thing to another. Are these, can you just explain why each one is up before us tonight, maybe? That might.
Yes.
Thank you.
So they are things that, uh, updates that they have made to the policies. Some of them are brand new, but then others have been renamed and like things that it may have seemed a little confusing because some of the stuff that had been in a previous policy has moved to a different policy because they felt like the language fit better there. And, but then they added to that as well. So like some of them are brand new policies and it'll say that, it'll say new policy. But then some of them have been like, language has been moved and it's been reorganized and then they've added some to it as well. So that's kind of what you're seeing. In terms of the, the two school lunch policies, that was really, um, changed because of the, like the universal, the free meals, right? So all the new policies needed to, um, have that language in it and, um, and be changed to reflect that. That change at the state level. The tech policies. I think, um, one of the things that I would say that came up, um, let me pull it up here. So sometimes we have, um, in the policies, we've highlighted things in yellow. Because people on the policy subcommittee felt that they weren't sure, like for example, when the things say like in conjunction with the director of technology. That was something that, um, I know Shonda was talking about, like, do we need that in there? Like the MS, MASC said that, but like, do we, do we have a director of technol- like, I don't know, you know, I'm trying to say like, we were looking on, like exactly, you know, should we be including that word choice? So we weren't sure about that. So that's why it's highlighted in yellow and then also marked through. Did you want to speak to that Kirk?
Yeah, just, uh, just in an effort to put each of the policies into the record tonight, I'm happy to share my screen and just click on them and, and you can speak to, I think each one just briefly.
Okay.
So let me share my screen. Okay, so you should be looking at the universal free school lunch policy.
Yep. So that's not, we don't have anything specific to ask about that or talk about with the committee. It's just, like I said, they changed this to, to reflect the, the policy change for like everyone getting free lunches.
I see Mr. Hares has a hand.
Uh, Mike, is it about this policy or?
It is. Yep. Just a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I know that the, um, universal free school meals initiative is a relatively recent, recent feature from the state. Do we know if and when this will be sunsetting and if, if the language had to be adapted in order to anticipate a sunsetting of the policy?
Uh, it's our stand, understanding, uh, Mr., Mr. Hares that this will continue to be included in the governor's budget year over year. As we know with all things relative to budget, uh, they're subject to change depending on who's in office. At which point if universal screen, uh, free school meals is no longer offered, it would render this policy moot.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to the next one, which is EFD.
Again, this is just changes to, um, you know, their, the language around charging families for meals because of that program. So we don't have any questions for the committee about that.
What was the school nutrition program policy? Okay, now we're moving on to the policy GBE, which is the personal use of techno, personnel use of technology. And before we start that, I see Mr. Gleason's hand up. Did you have a question on the previous policy that was just up?
No, I have a comment on this policy, but, um, I'll let Ms. Vessel speak first.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, I, like, the yellow stuff is again, stuff that we changed. We felt like it should be added in. It was different from, it's a little bit different from the original. So I guess we were, um, wanting some feedback on that.
Joe, why don't you go ahead?
Uh, thank you Vice Chairman. Uh, and I did hear what the superintendent said, and I understand that this is a first reading and we're not gonna get into a royal rumble on the terminology used in these policies. But, uh, I couldn't help but notice that in the second paragraph, it indicates that digital resources are provided to support the work of the district. Occasional personal use is permitted. Whereas in the fourth paragraph, it said staff should not use school, school issued accounts, including email for personal use. So that kind of struck me as a bit contradictory when I first read it.
Can you say that one more time, Mr. Gleason? I'm just trying to keep up with my notes.
This is stuff that I do. It, it, it says, and again, this is, and I, I'm not trying to be a dead horse or, or make a big deal. This is just the kind of stuff that people in my profession look at and hammer away at. The second paragraph indicates that digital resources, which is the umbrella term for everything that's being used in the district. Uh, are provided to support the work of the district, uh, with occasional personal use being permitted. Then in the fourth paragraph, it says that staff should not use school related, school issued accounts, including email for personal use.
Could I respond to providing clarification?
Yes.
So I, I think like a laptop is different than email. And there was a specific concern in the fourth paragraph, uh, that using a school email account is akin to using school letterhead. And using a school laptop is not quite the same. So if you need to print out something from your laptop, that would be acceptable in the second paragraph, but you shouldn't be using your school email account for non-school purposes in the fourth. So I would say they're not quite the same thing.
Yeah, not to complicate this, but the thing that came up in some of our conversations too, is that depending on what building you're in or whether or not you want to connect to district wifi, using personal accounts would be the preference, but that might be limited. So in my mind, this change in that fourth paragraph allows for some flexibility. Uh, sorry, in the first, in the second paragraph and the third, in the fourth paragraph, it really clarifies that concern about the email.
All right. So I, Amy Vessels, are you noting that this is an area that?
Yep.
Maybe, okay. Is there anything else on this policy before we move on to the next one?
I would just say, Madam Vice Chair, that, um, I am taking Attorney Gleason's suggestion to heart here because this is where we're looking for some clarity. As this is something that we need to clarify for faculty and staff in the school. So, um, we'll, we'll definitely revisit on that, that conversation for the point of clarity. As I heard what people explained about the policy.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. We are now on to IJND. Oops, I'm clicking on the wrong computer. I got two computers going here.
Okay, so.
Okay, access to digital resources.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing in this, like I said, is the phrase in yellow was in the original one and we thought it should be taken out.
And that's because you have the title Director of Technology and.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And now we're on BHE.
Hold on, I'm not sure that we were done with, uh, that. Let me just see if, I think Sharon has her hand up. So let me acknowledge her. Go ahead Sharon.
Um, I just have a question and it may not fit nicely into digital resources. I'm not really sure where it fits, but, um, there has been some, I've heard some questions or some people talking about, um, the use of cell phones in the schools and wishing that there was, um, more clarity around cellphone use in schools in particular. People are wanting cell phones to be not available in schools. I have heard that in a couple of different places. And I'm wondering if, if there is a policy somewhere in here or if that fits into this policy or if that's a subject for another time. Um, I just wanted to put it up there.
Kirk, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Pock for bringing that up. I've actually have had conversations about both sides of that coin. Um, and that is an operational piece of the school system in terms of cellphone use in the schools and it is an important topic. I want to name that, acknowledge that, uh, you bringing that forward. It doesn't necessarily reflect in these policies that came through us through the recommended mask revisions. Uh, but I will make a note of that to return to that topic.
Thank you. I actually have similar questions. So does operational, uh, Kirk? Does that translate into a protocol that would end up in a handbook? Is that what that means? Or, or is that just something that?
That just means that it's, we don't have a policy in terms of student use of cell phones. So it, it falls to the operational, uh, decision-making of the, the school district leaders in terms of when they can use, can't use those sorts of things. So, um, again, we'll come back to that since it's not part of the conversation tonight.
Okay. Is there anything else on this policy? Just quickly, I can't see everybody on one screen. So I don't see any other hands up right now. Um, Sharon, is that okay with you if we put that on the background? Okay, great. Thank you. Let's, uh, move on to policy BHE.
Yeah, the only change that we add, did was we added the word shared documents because, um, I know like on in the communications subcommittee, we've talked about this a lot in terms of like making sure people are clear about what violates open meeting law. Um, and so that wasn't in the original document and we felt it really should be.
I'm losing my place on my list. BHE, IJNDC. Acceptable use of digital resources.
Um, yes. So with this one. So Shondor, I don't know if you want to speak to this because you wanted to strike the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. Do you want to talk about that?
Oh, it, it's not, it's moving it to the, uh, its own bullet point. It was lumped in with the Children's Internet Protection Act. And the way it read, it made it sound like the Child Online Privacy Protection Act was designed to protect minors from inappropriate matter and it's actually doing something else, protecting their privacy. So, uh, just in the interest of accuracy, I made that edit to clarify that they're two different things serving different purposes. Just me being pedantic.
And then the other changes are ones we've already talked about with the Director of Technology stuff.
Excellent. Another one?
Excuse me, I believe I meant EHAA. District security relating to technology.
Um, yeah, so this is a brand new policy. And I think Shonda, I think you were asking what sensitive meant, right? You wanted clarification on that?
Yeah, I just don't like policies that refer to terms that aren't defined.
So that was our only, um, question about that.
Okay. And when it says a source is MASC 2023, that means that they have a model policy that we, uh, we looked at and we're adopting that language as a new policy for us. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, because this stuff came out in December 2023.
Got it.
I believe this language exactly matches the model policy for this.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next is EHB, data and records retention.
All right. Yeah, so this is a new policy. We didn't have anything, um, that we wanted to talk about. I mean, anything particular to talk about with this unless people had questions or comments?
This policy really speaks to putting on notice on what is data and records.
Okay, I don't see any hands up. So I think we can move on to the next one.
ADCB. District website and social media.
Yeah, this was one, um, that we had a question about because, and the question that we had is involving, um, the school, the school building committee website that was created. Um, because this says all such online platforms will be maintained by district staff. And that's not maintained by district staff. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it's not maintained by the district staff. Um, I can ask for clarity that if a, an elected school committee member in this case, uh, maintaining that, uh, falls under that category.
That was our question.
Um, this is an important policy that's been brought to us, uh, from, uh, our communication specialist, Bridget Hanigan, as well as our technology manager, Su Chi, uh, around district and social media. As you know, uh, the social media world can be, uh, a, a hard thing to tame. And so this is a policy to help that official communications from the school district would have to be done by the school district on school district accounts. Um, and a big part of that is, uh, records law requires that we maintain records on such things. So we're investigating methodologies of which we would retain, be able to, to, um, keep records for seven years, uh, social media records for seven years on official district channels. So, uh, policy KDC, community use of digital resources.
Um, yeah, this is a new policy. So it's just, um, the one, the one thing that we have in yellow that we've talked about before. No other discussion points.
Let's see, that was, that was KDC, right? Yeah.
Yep.
So IJNDB, two left here, use of technology and instruction.
Okay, um. Yeah, we didn't have any, I don't see any notes on this one. No, no, nothing extra than what we show here.
And our last policy to show you tonight, JICJ, student use of technology in schools.
No, I don't see anything. Although there was one, I must have missed. I don't see a comment coming up, so I'll just ask it now. There's a thing in a number of the policies that comes up, um, about, um, people signing that acceptable use form or whatever.
Yep.
And we had questions about, um, does that also apply to school committee?
Yeah, the acceptable use is for all, uh, people that are administered a, a district use computer. So that, I think that's something we need to tighten up.
Yeah, because I don't think we have done that. That's what we were questioning about. It's like, we didn't remember signing that. So that, that was something that we were wondering about.
I will take that to the team. Thank you, Ms. Vessels.
Yep. And that was it. Uh, Shondor or Jackie or Dana, did I forget anything? Okay.
All right, doesn't look like it. So that was a lot. I want to send, you know, my thanks to the policy subcommittee for doing all that work behind the scenes and getting this ready to bring to us tonight. And, um, for new members of the school committee, the processes that we do two readings of, policies that come before the school committee before voting to accept, to voting on policies and making any changes to them. So this is the first reading. Um, we will have a second reading. Um we will have a second reading of all of these at the next meeting, I believe, and. And then after the second reading. We can take a vote. So if you do have comments that we didn't address tonight, or something comes up after tonight, you can send your thoughts to Amy. So she can compile them, so that's fair. So okay with you? Great. Okay. Moving on, um. I think we are at the item F of new business, which is the construction manager agreement amendment. And we will be taking a vote, and I believe this is going to be. Um actually, this is going to be new items of business F G and H. They're all kind of related to. Um then the Shoba Regional High School Building Project, and with that, I'm going to hand this over to Joe to kind of. Um make the first motion, and then we can. Have discussion where you explain where this is coming from. Does that work?
Yeah, I think that's the thing to do. Let's do the motion first, and then we can tee it up. There's a lot to be said about what's for the committee. So uh preliminarily, I will move that the Nishoba Regional School District Committee or the Nishoba Regional School District School Committee. Approve and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract amendment presented to the Nishoba Regional School District School Committee. Namely, Amendment One to the Owner Construction Manager Agreement. By between the Nishoba Regional School District and the Construction Manager Consigli Construction Company, Inc. Which amendment, among other things, increases by an amount not to exceed four million forty-three thousand two hundred and five dollars, the compensation for services rendered. By the construction manager prior to the owner's acceptance of the guaranteed maximum price for the project.
I will second that, and then I'm gonna hand this back over to Joe to kind of translate all of those words into what's actually happening.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair and Superintendent Director. Please correct me where I misspeak. So uh the motion before you this evening is uh for authorization. For the superintendent to sign essentially what is an amendment to our construction management agreement. The amendment pertains to what's being called a pre-G M P or a gross maximum, pre-gross maximum price amendment to the contract. Specifically for the purposes of uh the installation of the geothermal system for the new high school. Um the uh this is what's called a a non-trade bid. This is the um. Uh this is not essentially a trade bid that the the construction management company will be soliciting later in this project. What they're doing is they're going out to bid, or they've gone out to bid for these geothermal services. Um and at this time, because there was some concern that if they didn't get out there early and get ahead of this, they may not be able to get. Um a number of qualified bidders for the project. Um if you are interested in the whole minutia of this particular issue, I would direct you to the one hour twenty-two minute. Mark of our last meeting on March twenty-first. Uh but essentially, what this agreement, what essentially our construction manager advised us is they received seven. Uh bids for uh geo- geothermal services. An installation of the system at the high school. Uh these bids came from a wide array of uh. Uh vendors and providers throughout the Northeast, and one of them actually was from Europe. They do have a. Base of operation in Massachusetts, but a European uh company did bid on this project. Uh the low bidder according to spec is Chesapeake Geo Systems. They came in at approximately, and I approximately give you the exact number, it's three point seven, three million seven thirty-seven, three hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The total amount that uh we're seeking approval for this evening is actually four million forty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. That essentially adds in some of the contingencies and add-ins that the construction manager has added to the uh amendment. Um and there's no, there's no padding here. All all of these um items you can see on the meeting materials. It includes things like um. Uh what they call S T I, which is subcontract default insurance and other costs and and uh expenses attended to the um. Installation, including the construction manager's fee for this, which is was a relatively modest eighty thousand dollars. So I think that pretty much sums up uh what this motion is, and I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I'll just add that um the school building committee. Cause like Joe said, it already discussed this, approved it, and we're bringing it here just as kind of a formality. Um to authorize a vote that the school building committee already took. Um this. So is there any other questions or guys ready to vote on this?
I'll just add one more uh comment, Madam Chair. Uh this, there are three motions, two of which were crafted by our. Legal counsel, the third one I did myself, so this one uh does come from our legal counsel attorney Peter Mello.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Um I'm not seeing any hands up, so I will take. The vote here, and I will start with. Um I'm gonna go backwards, and I'll just get my list here. Uh Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Uh Jackie?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Uh Joe?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's unanimously passes. Um. The second. Motion has to do with granting authority to the. Building committee to approve all future project-related contracts and amendments, and I think this is really just so we can ensure that. Um this can happen so that the project can move along along. The schedule that has been laid out and that we're not getting in the way of progress. Uh go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Yeah, I just wanted to just put a little color to this before the motion. Uh and that is exactly right, Ms. Cohen. So. Operationally speaking now, the school building committee is uh working as this, under the school committee, as a subcommittee, the school committee. To keep the project moving along operationally. So the uh or the invoices and the passing of these various things are critical to the operational timeline. Of when a- activities are executed. So um in that way, by authoring the school building committee, we can be efficient. Uh we have outstanding members on our committee, including three members that sit on this board. Um and so uh it's imperative that that um we be able to function and operate. Move leaves a building committee and are looking for uh this approval.
Thank you. Joe, do you want to make the motion, and then I can open it up to any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. I I would move that the Nishoba Regional School District, excuse me, Nishoba Regional School District School Committee authorize the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee. To approve unilaterally all future contracts and amendments attended to the Nishoba Regional High School construction project that is our and or may be. The subject of the owner construction manager agreement between the Nishoba Regional School District and Consigli Construction Company, Inc.
Uh I can second that. Is there any discussion?
Uh the only thing I would say, Madam Chair, and I know Mr. Simon has a question, but I I just echo the superintendent's uh representations. This is really just about time being money, so. Um this helps us move in a more efficient and expeditious way, keep on schedule with the construction schedules and not have to go through the secondary. Um approval process of bringing it before the district committee. Thank you.
I'm gonna let Shondor ask his question, and then I'm going to. Ask a clarifying question. Go ahead, Shondo.
Thank you. Uh I don't have any issue with doing this from an expediency standpoint. I just wanted to be clear that the school committee still has the fiduciary duty around all these contracts and payments. Um so how will we? See what's happening? Should we have to just look at this uh building committee's meeting materials to follow along, or will these be? Shared with the school committee in some form?
Do you want me to answer that? Amy, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm so used to unmuting myself. I've been unmuted the whole meeting, but yeah, Joe, why don't you take that?
Yeah, no, I understand the the issue here, and um I think Mr. Simon's concern is a valid one, but I I would say yes. Uh you would want to monitor what the building committee is doing, but also as part of our meetings. Uh I and as well the superintendent, we bring additional doc um information and approvals of the building committee. To the um district committee for your oversight and uh. You know, it it commentary, if that is what will make you feel more comfortable, Mr. Simon.
Um. Yeah, one, do you mind if I add on to that, Joe? Um at every school building committee meeting, we are presented with uh an update on the the budget. And that would be something that could easily be presented during. These school committee meetings as part of the building committee update, you know, just um where we are with the budget, but. The other clarifying question that I wanted to ask Mr. Gleason, just for the benefit of the community, is that. By approving this motion, um there's no scenario where any of the amendments or the contracts that the school building committee would approve. Could ever exceed the voted total project budget.
Yeah, I apologize, Madam Chair. I made a note to make comment about that. So yes, um statutorily and contractually. Uh the building committee cannot exceed the um total approved. Uh project budget of two million, two hundred and forty-one million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Um and I don't think there's anybody on the building committee, at least not myself, who wants to try and exceed that amount because any. If we have to exceed that, that will require going back. To the voters of our district, and I don't relish going back a second time, seeking additional funds, so. Statutorily and contractually under the project funding agreement with the M S B A. We cannot, uh we being the building committee, cannot exceed the uh debt exclusionary amount that was approved in September.
That help? Is everybody ready to vote on this? I don't see any of their. Hands up, so I will take the vote on this matter, and I will start with Scott again.
Yes.
Okay, uh Dana?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes, I see a thumbs up from Sharon. Uh Mike?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Um. Joe?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion passed unanimously. Thank you, and now we just have one more. Related to this matter.
Yes, thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman, and this is the one that I crafted myself. Um the, as I said, the first two were council's preparation. This one's mine. Uh I will move the district committee designate and appoint the superintendent as the district committee's authorized signatory. To execute on behalf of the Nishoba Regional School. Uh Nishaba- Nishoba Regional School District School Committee. All future contracts and amendments attended to the Nishoba Regional High School. Construction project that is our or may be the subject of the owner construction manager agreement. Between the Nishoba Regional School District and Consigli Construction Company, Inc.
And I will second that one, too, and just um as a point of clarification, I want the school committee to be aware that the. School building committee um. Has already kind of built some checks and balances into this um into this process so that. You know, there's certain monetary value that requires a superintendent to bring it to the school building committee for approval, and so we're just trying to streamline this whole process. So we can ensure the cogs on the wheel keep spinning, and this project can keep trucking along, so. Um are there any questions on this? And Superintendent Downey, did you need to add anything to this?
Uh no, I think the motion speaks for itself.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just I just say that just to um. Put a little bow on that, uh the, just for the district committee members' knowledge, uh two things. One is that the superintendent is um. Authorized up to twenty-five thousand dollars to approve. Change orders and or amendments to the construction manager agreement. Anything over and above twenty-five thousand dollars is um must come before approval for the building committee. And lastly, I'm gonna apologize to the committee. Um the Madam Vice Chair had requested that I change the wording a little bit on the motions, but I I always call that committee the district committee she wanted at the school committee. So I apologize for stumbling over my own words, but I'm blaming our vice chair, Ms. Cohen, for that, so sorry about that.
Thanks, Joe. I'll 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 tuck that one away. Um all right, we ready to take a vote on this one? Um Joe, I'll start with you.
Yes.
All right, uh Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh Jackie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you. We have unanimously approved that motion. As well. That brings us to the next section of our. Meeting, and I um will turn this over to Director of. Finance and Operations, uh Mr. Mulcarren, for an update on our February operating report.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh as Ms. Masterson is pulling up the February operations report. Um I will remind the committee that the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee uh continues to review monthly operational reports as a standing agenda item. Uh I want to point the committee's attention. I don't see a leader sharing it, so let me just pull mine up, and then I can.
Okay, I have it open, too, if that's easier.
Uh would you mind?
Not at all, um. Let me see, actually, I don't. Oh, there it is.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Uh I want to point the committee's attention to our special education line, which has been reviewed uh in detail at recent budget and warrant subcommittee meetings. Um we're experiencing the increased costs um. Uh on in expenses on services and and transportation alike this year. Um therefore, we're expecting that we'll expend our special education budget uh completely within the operating budget. Um any additional uh costs or overages would go directly to our circuit breaker account. Uh which is exactly what it is legislatively and statutorily intended for. Uh that way, there's no other impact on the rest of the operating budget um within um deficits there, so. Uh we'll continue to update the committee on this in the coming months, uh as well as the operating parts uh reports in general. Uh but as it stands today, um our expected and projected end of the year balance, uh at least at the end of February, uh was just uh over six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, are there any questions on that presentation? Thank you very much, Mr. Mulcarren. That update, and we trust that the Budget and Warrant Committee um has already reviewed this, and so. Not seeing any questions on this. I'm going to move us along to the next item of business. Which I think is back to Mr. Mulcarren for some grants that he's gonna bring to our attention and that we are going to vote to accept.
That's correct. Um I will do my very best to present the detail on this, but I know our assistant superintendent Laura Friend is at the ready to jump in. Um we're seeking approval of the F C one sixty-one evaluate and select high-quality instructional materials. Network support grant, uh which is through DESI, uh in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh this uh goes into the work, uh and continues to go into the work uh that you saw presented at at uh. School committee meeting a couple of months ago, when our our curriculum directors Laura Padgington brought forward uh some members of the literacy. Uh committee as they are moving forward with looking at selecting a new literacy curriculum K to five. Um so this continues to support that work in the selection of high-quality instructional uh materials and the evaluation of different programs. Uh that we may continue for the district that were um. Uh the the curriculum adoption was also discussed during the budget season. Uh I don't know if Assistant Laura Friend, Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend wants to add anything on on that.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mulcarren. But I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're we've we're grateful for the fifteen thousand dollars um that we have received from this grant.
Absolutely, so. Uh Joe, will you refresh my memory? Do we have a separate motion on both of these?
I do, yeah. So let me um move to accept. The fiscal year twenty-four F C one six one, evaluate and select high-quality instructional materials network grant. Next, excuse me, network support grant for expenditure as presented in accordance with school committee policy D D. excuse me, network support grant for expenditure as presented in accordance with school committee policy DD.
I will second that motion. So any discussion and questions? So I just wanted, I'm not seeing any hands up, but I will just ask for some clarification. So this is going, did I hear you say this is going to be offsetting the four hundred thousand dollar line item for, no?
No, what it does is it covers the work that those teachers are doing outside of the school day, also the pilot programs that they're using. So it covers the work that we're doing now in the selection of the curriculum. So it's really critical, important work, and it's good to have a grant from DESI to cover this. So we can really sort of go to all extents to make sure we select the best curriculum for our students.
Excellent, excellent. All right, any other, oh, I see Dana's here, though.
Just a quick question, when will we get another update about the status of that curriculum? The new literacy curriculum?
I would put that to Assistant Superintendent Friend.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Our, we are currently field testing the curriculum right now. We just started field testing the second curriculum. We should have a decision made by May eighth. So if the school committee chair and superintendent Downing have fine time on the school committee's schedule, we'd be very pleased to provide an update after May eighth.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may? Yes, we're targeting the second May meeting for an update on that.
Great. Thank you.
We'll look forward to that. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I am going to call the vote to accept the motion on the table. Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
I heard you this time, excellent. Jackie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that passed unanimously, and we'll move on to the next grant, and I assume back to you, Russ.
That's correct, thank you. So members of the community are probably not aware that there is a new IEP being released and implemented and adopted in the state of Massachusetts next year. So the state was generous in putting out grant opportunities for districts to utilize some funding to ensure that we have all of our staff trained on this new IEP format. So the total grant amount in twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars under DESI Fund Code 274 would support the implementation of this for staff to either become train the trainers, so that they can help and support our staff, or for staff to get trained directly on this, as well as work with consultants that may be necessary during the implementation phase. In our district with, between our special education teachers and special education staff, including preschool, we have over seventy educators. So there's a lot of training that needs to happen, and this grant helps support that, so they don't have to get pulled from their classrooms or pulled from services for students during the school day.
Awesome. Well, pushing up of all the grants that you've found for for us to take advantage of. So Joe, are you prepared to make a motion?
I am, Madam Chair. Madam Vice Chair, excuse me. I move to accept the fiscal year twenty-four FC 274, new individualized education plan implementation grant for expenditure as presented in accordance with the school committee policy DD.
I will second that. So any discussion, questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. We'll start with Scott this time.
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's another motion that has unanimously passed. Thanks, guys. We're going to keep plugging along here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we are now on to item ten of our agenda on the finished business. And this will be another vote on accepting the Student Opportunity Act presentation that was given last meeting. And I think what we'll do here is we'll have Joe read the motion, and then we can open it up to discussion.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. I move to approve the Student Opportunity Act as presented at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four school committee meeting.
Okay, so I will second that, and just remind folks that this presentation was in the meeting materials from the previous meeting. We got a very rich presentation by Assistant Superintendent Friend and her team. And tonight, we are voting to accept it as required by DESI. Is that a fair summary? Okay. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, so I will take the vote on this. Joe?
Yeah.
Hey, Shandor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
All right, sounds getting better there. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. I'm sure that is a weight off the shoulders of the administration to have that done. Okay, so let's, that means we are to our subcommittee advisory reports. And I'm going to start with Mr. Horish for the budget warrant report. Mike, what do you got for us?
Thank you. Budget warrant met on March twenty-fourth. And it was a relatively brief meeting. We did have the February operations report, and we also had some colorful conversations about the Student Opportunity Act and its impact on both the budget and state funding.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Next meeting is April.
Thank you. We will move on to communication. Sharon?
Communication has no report.
Okay, I know you guys have been hard at work at the the manual, and that's coming up in a future meeting or two, so we'll get to that then. Joe, school, school building committee's report is next. Do we need any additional report from you?
Oh, yes, I do, Madam Vice Chairman, thank you. The Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee did meet on Thursday, March twenty-first. We had a very spirited meeting, and the two primary topics that were discussed were, one, as the amendment to the construction manager relative to geothermal services. I will not go further into that, safe to say, and I don't think I mentioned it before, it's Chesapeake GeoSystems out of Baltimore that was the low bidder going to spec for the amount that I had previously articulated. The other, but probably more important issue was that we had a very extensive presentation on the both bathroom, the gender-neutral slash non-binary bathroom design, designs, and the non-gender slash non-binary locker room designs. I am happy to report that, and I gave the public and anyone who was interested ample opportunity to come and be heard. There was no objections, there was no commentary, there was no public comment. In fact, nobody showed up at all to hear our presentation on the bathrooms, which leads me to believe that people don't have an issue with it. We did have one question that came from a constituent in Lancaster, and that was it. If you're interested in the details attended to the bathroom designs, I again would encourage you to watch the video of the meeting of the twenty-first. Our next meeting is scheduled for April eighteenth, and in the meantime, we will be meeting with the MSBA on April tenth, I believe, in regards to the design development. So that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to personnel. Is there a report from Sharon?
Personnel also has no report.
Okay, policy? We heard from you tonight. I'm not sure you need to report out anything else. But if you do, this is your chance.
Just going to say that we're meeting on April twenty-second, and we're going to speak about the parent communication policy and continue to make updates to other policies.
Okay, great. You have a lot on your plate right now. We appreciate all of the work you've been doing with your committee.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
And if you don't mind me adding, we will be bringing that to a May agenda to this committee for first reading.
Great, I look forward to that. I think that's important policy. I'm looking forward to seeing what's being done. Okay, that completes our subcommittee reports. Now we're on to our advisory committee reports, audit advisory. Dana, do you have anything to report to us?
Just a quick update, we're hoping to meet next week. I think all the RFPs were due in April first, so we want to see what we have, and we'll review it at that point.
Okay, keep us posted. Thanks. Dear J, Dr. Reinert? Do you have a report?
My report is that unfortunately, Dear J met, and I was unavailable to participate. So once those meeting minutes are approved, and I can review them, I will summarize those with this group.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll just have to wait till that update. And the last item is the CPAC report, but Karen is not here tonight, so we'll have to wait for that update as well. That brings us to items for the next agenda. Is there anything on anybody's mind that they'd like me to pass along to the chairperson for consideration the next meeting? I do have the planning calendar open on my end, and it looks like we meet next on April tenth. It's an in-person meeting. And we will be getting the school choice presentation from Superintendent at that time. And we'll be doing second readings of the policies that came before us. And I guess we'll be getting an update on the innovation pathways as well. Anything else that I missed? Go ahead.
Yeah, the presentation on school choice will be the first April meeting, and the school choice hearing will be the second April meeting. And so work with Ms. Masterson to make sure proper postings are put out there following all the laws and regulations of Massachusetts.
Okay, very good. Anything else on anybody's mind? But next meeting? All right, with that, I think we've come to the end of our time here tonight, so I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think Dana got that all in favor. Do I have to do a roll call for this? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And me? Yes, all right. Bye, guys. And I stuck to Leah's time. Woo!